Comes on full blast. Recording even.
Yes, yes. I get the message when I log on to the computer that it's recording. So. I don't know. I. I don't know if, I mean, I think it's the schoolhouse, but I don't know. I think they fixed that glitch because it's supposed to be the schoolhouse. Okay. And like I said, Kim is definitely not going to attend and but she may try to zoom in. Always everything so when I do a slide deck it won't be embarrassing.
You haven't started the meeting yet. That's you? How about now?
No, my, my mic is off. Maybe I have to say mute.
You have to.
You, you, computer. No, I am muted.
Schoolhouse, I think it's MJ.
I thought I.
Right, right, no, it was the, it was the main computer.
Yeah, MJ's not muted.
Wow.
I got it.
Sorry. Okay. All right, I'm gonna start this meeting at 4:02. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Okay, roll call. We have Wanda Jenner. We have Nona, we have MJ, we have Jennifer, and Dee is absent due to illness. Does anyone have anything, any oral communication? Brightam's not on the agenda. Okay, no. Okay, I'm going to ask for approval of the minutes from November 15.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
We're just approving the minutes, not all of those reports attached? The fact that they were attached, fine, but the content of those reports?
No, those were just the, that was the presentation Kim gave us in November.
November 15.
Do I have a second? Okay, vote to approve. Okay, unanimous approval. Okay, great. So first order of business, fire marshal updates, and Kim said she probably weren't, was not gonna make it. She might zoom in. I don't see her. But she gave a fantastic presentation two days ago, so she, she certainly has every right to be home with her children. Um, okay, so let's move on to the second item, which is the continued discussion of residents' question about decking material. And that was attached to the agenda, and I'd like to have two-part discussion. I would like to just discuss the memo and if we understand it. And then I'd like to have a discussion about what the actions are with that memo. Are we gonna send it to the town manager and what are we gonna ask? So, so would anyone mind if I asked the first question on the? Okay, so MJ, you and Dee wrote this memo. It was a fantastic memo. Thank you so much. I have one question. It was a very clear memo. But the, so, so the way I understand it, because the problem, stated problem, is the only part that I wasn't clear on. If I have a house with a wood deck and I want to just rebuild that deck, I don't want to redesign it, I just want to build another deck that looks like a wooden deck. The current building materials that I am allowed to use. There are no current building materials allowed, given how it's written, or it's, it's, so there's no way for me to rebuild my deck with materials that look like or are wood?
Yeah, you can only use non-combustible materials for your deck right now, with the ordinance, the way it is.
And there are no possible, like, all of the wood synthetics or composites are all. They do not meet that criteria.
Right, none of them would meet this criteria because the town ordinance limits it to four characteristics or four options, instead of the state, which has six options, and because those four options are too limiting, so. Yeah, so there is nothing in the CalFire's building materials list that will meet the town ordinance. It, the, I talked to the guy from the state fire marshal, and he's actually the guy. His name, Ben, Ben Ho, he actually was the original author of the building materials list. And, and now he's retired, but he works as a consultant or, or whatever for CalFire. So he told me that it is possible that there are products that do meet the town's requirements, but they're not in the building materials list. They're not in the CalFire building materials list, but in theory, he says, they could exist. But, but they're just not in the building materials.
Is that because they didn't apply?
Right, yeah, they would just have to apply, but I'm sure, you know, if a product applied. I mean, if a product qualified for the building materials, they would apply to be on it, because it's kind of like a marketing, you know, opportunity for you.
So, so would it be possible in the memo to just add, right at the beginning of paragraph, to say the, the problem we have found is that currently there is no materials available, given this guideline, where residents can simply wish, I don't know what's the word, not restore, but basically rebuild an existing wooden deck. Because of the limit, you know, because of the restrictions. And it's a pretty, some, somehow kind of telling us what this memo says for people like me who had to read it three times, and, and I did get it, but I don't think everyone else is gonna read it three times. And it would help when we start discussing to step, step two, what are we gonna do with this memo? I think that would help. Because it's a great memo. And it's a big problem, because if you live in the ranch and you have a wooden deck. Well, to go through the process of redesigning the deck out of metal is not cheap or easy. Well, even doable in some cases.
Right, and actually, because originally, we had back in, what was it, 2021, the town had specified everything had to be non-combustible, and then we got the town to back off on that, because nobody wanted to build a all non-combustible deck, so. So I think the town and the building department doesn't want to limit residents to non-combustible, it's just that when the building official wrote the ordinance and, and made that decision, he didn't realize the impact of what he was doing.
So does anyone else have any questions about the memo and the content of the memo?
I have a question about sort of schedule for revisions or exceptions as new products become available. So there are all kinds of fire retardant chemicals that are in the pipeline. And for people who just want to make an existing deck or wooden structure more fire safe, what, what would they do?
Yeah, that's not, it's not really addressed in the town ordinance.
Or, or the fire.
I don't think, I mean, adding a fire retardant to your deck, that's what you're asking about?
Basically, yes. I mean, there are a lot of new fire retardant chemicals that are, you know, coming to market that are supposed to be persistent and pretty durable, or that are not. And so I'm just wondering if, if anyone is envisioning a pathway where you could say, well, I'm not ready to rebuild my whole house, which has, you know, siding or a deck or whatever, but, but I could do this, and at least it would help.
Can I give that a shot and answer that? Okay, so. So the, and I've been actually tracking fire resistant paints quite closely. And quite a few big companies have tried to get variances in different parts of California where building materials require amber resistance or certain materials, and so far, no one's been able to use even the existing fire retardant paints, and, and they're not quite there yet. There's, there's a brand, I think, coming from Australia that might be, but what we're talking about is an ordinance that doesn't say amber resistant. It says non-combustible. So most of the fire resistant products out there are not classified as non-combustible. That, that's a really high bar. And, and so I, fire retardant paints will probably never take the place of saying you want an amber resistant deck or a non-combustible deck. And for new construction, I don't think they even say you can use composites. They're saying, we want you to use metal, we want you to use concrete, we want completely non-combustible, right? This is just for like remotes that they would allow you to use.
Oh, no, this applies to both new and replacement decks.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. So I, I think, Nona, the thing is, there's two questions here, and, and this ordinance is really about new or replacement decks, and your question is really about the whole fire issue, and what do you do to make yourself safer, and you're not replacing your deck, you just, you just want to do something to make it amber resistant, so.
Well, I can imagine that there are gonna be people who say, well, I'm not, I'm not gonna replace my deck yet, because I'm gonna have to do it in a really different way than I thought I would. So how can I be a little bit safer?
Yeah.
Until I'm ready to do that.
Right.
Maybe I'm wrong, but I, I can imagine that's what some people are gonna be.
Right.
Gonna be thinking or gonna feel forced into it.
Yeah, I'm just saying the ordinance doesn't address.
Yeah.
It's not addressing fire safety in that, it's just talking about new and replacement.
But there, there are some now for decks, there are some amber resistant finishes you can put on a deck. And you, but you have to just really sand them down a lot, so it's, it's more than what you would normally do just to kind of revive your redwood deck if you wanted it, you have to really sand them deeply, and then there are some amber resistant coatings, stains, that some, they, they are not the same as a as a, as a good material, but they do supposedly do a little bit, but, but the, the problem is there's no official studies yet.
Yeah, and I, and I know personally Dee and I don't, don't really advocate those products, because, you know, they don't last that long. No one knows actually how long they're really gonna last, and, and the environmental consideration, so.
Yeah, I haven't even thought about that. Okay, so any more questions? Oh. Well, we're not, we're not quite there. Yeah, so, so do we have any more questions in the committee on the content of the report? Okay, so let's take questions from the attendees on the content of the report.
Yeah, I, I don't see a hand raised icon there, so pardon me for butting in, but I think it's great what you're doing. The other issue we ran into when we did our decks was the over and under four feet rule. We were told that we had to make our decks out of titanium or whatever, a remodel, our deck set of, all that stuff, but they're 16 feet high. And I'm pretty sure in, and we pointed out where it is in the rules that over four feet is different. So if we're trying to problem solve, we're not the only people who run into that, so something else would be to clarify the under four foot and the over four foot rules, because the plan checkers don't seem to have that in their quiver of solutions. Thanks.
Go, go ahead with your question.
Yeah, if you want to get to the mic.
So does that also mean that there are no wooden materials that I can make a shed out? I mean, we were talking about containers for things the other day, that in the in the same zones that the decks are in, there's nothing, there's no wood-looking thing that I can build things out of that are non-combustible either, other than metal, but I mean, that, that, there isn't a wood something that is non-combustible either.
Yeah, there's hardy board.
Okay. Right, it's cement, right. And so I can build a cabinet out of hardy board? Okay. Is there any other questions about the actual content of the memo? Yeah, yeah, we're, we're, we're doing that next. Okay, so the question is, what do we want to do with the memo? So my thought would be to send it to the new town manager. And to suggest, either to, well, obviously suggest the building department modify this. It might also be good to offer, obviously, once the building department gets involved, I think just MJ and Dee can, can coordinate with them, but, but I need to ask the town manager for the resources to bring this to the building department's attention. Because obviously, he's, he's being very protective of staff, and, and well, he should be, because they're, they're overworked. So the question is, do we, do, do you and Dee want to offer to help coordinate this? Do you have a more detailed recommendation? You would like to say, we, we suggest that the building department does A, B, and C? Or do you want to just send the memo out and say the building department needs to look at this?
Yeah, I guess our memo doesn't really make any recommendations, right? It just says, this is the problem. I mean, my recommendation would be to just go with the state requirements and not try to be more strict, because by, by trying to be more strict, you know, we, we, the town didn't know what we were doing and what the repercussions were, so. So if I were gonna recommend anything, it would be just go to the state requirements, but is that what we want to do, or do we want to make a recommendation?
I, I think it would be easier for all involved if we made a recommendation. They don't have to take it.
Yeah.
I, I like the idea of this state recommendation, because this is not the first time we've gotten ourselves in trouble. Do you want, and Nona, what do you think?
We're achieving what we're really trying to.
Right.
Would, would you be willing to come back next month? Or you can even send it to me if you can get it done earlier. And simply have it on the memo. First of all, I do think we need a little quick paragraph that says the problem is, there are no materials right now we can use, because I, I know it's, you have to read the whole memo pretty thoroughly to get that.
Yeah, sure.
And then to, to make the, you know, or do you want me to just put it on a cover letter? And that way we could vote on it next month? Maybe that would be good to come back with the memo, put it in our packet, and then vote on it officially, because then it's the whole committee voting on the final memo, or?
Yeah, maybe that. What do you think, Greg? Maybe that's the better way to do it? I mean, the thing is, what Dee and I did was just a report, right, without really any recommendation, but yeah, it would make sense as a party.
I, I'd like, I'd like to have you come back next month and, and give it to me, like, in three weeks, so I can put it in the agenda packet. And then we can vote on it, that's an official recommendation, and then we send it to the town manager, and then they can respond any way they want.
Okay, so you'd rather have a report that has a recommendation?
I, I think so.
Okay, so then let me ask, what should the recommendation be as, as far as the, you know, the thing that triggered all this is that the building official decided one thing that if class B was good, that class A was better, so he said that the boards have to be class A. If, if we went with just class B, then we would meet the state requirement. If we put in the six options back, that the state options only specify a class B deck, which would include trucks. That's what Marin does, right? I mean, Marin just follows the state guidelines. You know, I, I forgot to go look at what Marin does, but, but anyways. Are we comfortable with just going with the state thing, or, or do we want to add another, basically another barrier by saying it has to be class A, even though that's stricter than the state? You guys have any feeling on that? Or Phil?
Clarify for me, who's imposing the limits now?
Well, when the building official wrote the ordinance.
The town building official.
Yeah, he took, he took out the two, two of the six options, because he wanted it to be stricter than the two.
Okay.
And, and the build, the CalFire guy told me, if we wanted to be stricter, maybe the only place to be stricter would be to say the decking material has to be class A instead of class B, but, but.
We don't have the authority to make this a fact. We can only make the recommendation or request.
Yeah, we're just gonna make a recommendation as a committee to the building, to the town, yeah.
Just to butt in, because I really apologize, I can't find the stupid hand icon for some reason. Vintage from.
Can you excuse me? Can you, can you wait until the committee is done discussing it, and, and then I promise you, I will come back to attendees, yes.
Okay.
Yes, Nona, go ahead.
I wanted to just go back for a second to a clarification question, because I, I think maybe my question about fire retardants wasn't clear. As I read your memo, it said the state's regulation option four allows fire retardant treated. And then you said that Portola Valley removed option four. But then in the next paragraph, it says, or materials that meet option one, two, three, or four can meet. So I, I guess that's where I'm not sure I'm, am I reading this correctly?
Oh, you know, I'm sorry, I, I was saying six options, but there were seven, and yeah, the town removed option four about exterior fire retardant treated wood. That does not mean a fire retardant that you put on top of the wood. That means, you know, like preserved wood, but it's preserved wood with an additional fire retardant in it, so that's a completely different thing.
Okay, so I, I'm still reading two things that don't seem consistent to me. One is that Portola Valley removed option four.
Yeah.
But then in the next sentence, it says materials that meet option one, two, three, or four. So is four an option? Or not?
Wait, you're looking at the sentence by eliminating those states.
So the previous sentence to that says, Portola Valley removed state regulation options four, six, and seven.
Right.
And the next paragraph ends by saying, or materials that meet option one, two, three, or four can meet PV's requirements. So does option, is option four removed, or is it, can it meet?
You're not alone, Nona. You know, I, I haven't.
I'm sorry. I, and I didn't write it, so I, I, that's why I'm asking just for clarification, so that if we do go to making a recommendation where we.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I think when I wrote option one, two, three, and four, I was talking, I was referencing PV's options one, two, three, and four. I should have actually put. Oh, no, I do have it. The, the very first picture shows PV's one, two, three, and four.
Maybe if you labeled your, your photos or something and referred to the label.
Yeah, okay, you're right, that, yeah, that's a yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure what I'm talking about in that second paragraph, option one, two, three, or four.
So maybe you mean, mean state options one, two, three, or five? Rather than one, two, three, or four?
That, that could.
That would make more sense.
Okay, one, two, three, and five. One, two, oh, okay, option one, two, three, or five would meet PV's requirements. Yeah, that would be the same thing, yeah.
Okay. And, and that's basically when they talk about treated wood, they're, they're saying that wood is, that has been soaked in the stuff, and I'm on the Marin website, and, and, and they seem to be at least in their deck back sheet, they seem to be referring to the state materials list, often, which is, I'm sure, something you'll look at this month. Why, why don't you and Dee, and then we'll go, we'll go and take comments, but my inclination would be to have you and Dee get together this month and then make your recommendation, and, 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 and clean up the report a little bit, and, and kind of put that introductory paragraph that says, this is the problem.
Okay.
So that, that the first 30 seconds of reading it, you know right away what the problem is.
Okay, all right, no problem. And then let me point out another thing is that the table on the last, the page four of the report, it lists hardwood products that. it lists hardwood products that actually wouldn't, that actually meet the state guidelines. Or if we go with the state guidelines, then people could have these tropical woods. They're very hard and so they're they're actually class A. And, uh, you know, Dee and I aren't really, and I don't know if the town allows tropical hardwoods, but um, so we're not, Dee and I, the subcommittee aren't that enthusiastic about tropical hardwoods, except that it does look better. But bamboo, actually, I guess bamboo is a pretty good option. So so if we go with the state guidelines, then we bring all those products back into, uh, you know, people's options. Plus, you know, if we go with class B, then we allow trucks and some a few other products.
There's a real simplicity going with the state guideline. There's a simplicity.
Yeah, and it makes us, you know, that way you don't go into Woodside, you're a contractor, and maybe this rule applies. And then you go a block away and it's Portola Valley, and now you can't use trucks.
And it makes it easy. It makes it easy and we want people to update their decks. We want to make it easy.
Yeah, that's true. That that's the real.
Let's go with the state guideline.
Yeah, because then your contractor, you don't have to go through a whole bunch of research. It's cheaper, it's easier. You can, yeah, okay, let let me take some questions. Okay, Philip, go ahead. Philip Palmer.
Yeah, thank you all for your your tremendous work on this. Uh, I think the idea of adopting the state standard is a good one. There was some discussion about class B versus class A. And I'm wondering if you might solve that problem by saying class B is permissible, class A is preferred. And then the second point I'd like to make, I was just wondering, and Kim has joined us. If if we go with the state guidelines, is there going to be any kind of conflict with rules or regulations from the fire district?
Kim, if if you're on there, can you answer that question? If if we're talking about decking materials and if we recommend that the town simply follow the state's guidelines for suggested decking materials? Would that conflict with any of the fire districts?
No, no. Hi, everybody. No, it wouldn't because the fire district adopts and allows exactly what the Office of the State Fire Marshal's office puts out. So the only conflict, so again, we always go with a minimum standard. And usually the state will put out what that minimum standard, it's up to the AHJ. If they wanted to go more restrictive, which in this case would be the the building department. So the building department, when it comes to the construction materials, there are the, that falls under their purview. And the fire district doesn't have, when it comes to the actual materials itself, it'll say, like, for example, roofing. It'll say, you know, class A is required. But we won't, we will only go with the materials that are approved as set forth in the Office of the State Fire Marshal's office. Unless the town decides to go with something more restrictive, then we support whatever the building, the town, the building department wants to go with.
Do you know if Woodside has a more restrictive?
They do not.
They do not, okay. Okay, uh, any other questions or comments?
Yes.
This David?
Yep.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, after seven hundred Zoom meetings, I can't figure out why that hand doesn't go up. I don't have a horse in the race. Our deck's approved, it's built. I'm just trying to point out some of the trials and tribulations we went through. And on that note, Trex ASAC Vintage is actually class A. So, um, we don't need to set to go to class B just to get composites. I just checked on their website and I've checked it before. So the reason that it wasn't acceptable to Ron had to do with these other tests, I think, that they wanted Ron, that MJ tried to sort out. And had a hard time because it was all specialized and all that. So that I think we can go with class A and still have a a semi reasonable choice of composites. It probably would rule out like EPE or IPA, however you say it. It might rule out some of the woods, I'm not sure. And that's that's my point. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? I I would, I would really like to suggest going with the state guidelines. And that way they're they're updated by the pros as new products come out.
Do we need to make a motion and vote on it?
Not not until next month when they come back with the memo.
Yeah, no, I'm basically asking what to put in the recommendation.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we all agree that, yeah, let's go with the state guidelines and not try to be more strict.
Yeah, well, it's been confusing me up until tonight's discussion, which helped a lot.
So you can either write the the new memo with Dee or you can write it and send it to me and I'll do a dummy check. Because if I understand it, anyone will understand it. So you you can choose which person you want to be a buddy with. I mean, it might make more sense to write it with Dee since she helped you write it.
Yeah, no, I'll I'll write it with Dee and then, um.
Maybe have your husband read it or well, not your husband.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, Dee, so Dee and I, as a subcommittee, will send you a version.
Yeah, but I can't comment on it. All I can do is put it in the agenda. Because if I commented on it, it would be a brown ass violation.
I I think we'll be able to do it, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
So just two quick thoughts as you close this out. Um, one is you might just go ask the town manager how he'd like to approach this. Before you just dump it on him, just say, hey, you know, we've got this issue. How would you like to approach it? I think you could do that as the chair before you bring them. And then in terms of the memo itself, which I think is great, um, when you do your conclusion, I I think add some of the sort of justification behind it. You know, we we conclude this and, you know, Marin does it this way. And, you know, just some of the basis for the conclusion that you come up with. Because I think that'll just make it easier for the people when they're taking it on. It's like, well, why should we accept this conclusion? So just make sure you add a little of that text as well. Thank you.
Right. I I think those are are good, good comments. I think the town manager's got his hands full and it it might be just nice to have a tight little package that's a recommendation. I mean, it's not like they have to take a recommendation. I'm happy to write an email to him uh, first to to see if he wants, I I would rather.
The report is in there.
Yeah, I can send it to him as it is.
Email him and say, hey, we put this report in, we we want to do these updates that we talked about, but.
I know what our recommendation is going to be. Do you want us, do you want a formal thing or or is this enough?
Yeah, and ask him, how do you want us to go forward on that report?
And 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 I may, I may offer up too that Dee is a former contractor and that the town's got that resource. Because I would think as a former contractor, she's she's got to have a knowledge.
She knows a lot more than I do in a lot of areas.
Okay, all right, I will do that. And then I will email your subcommittee if you need to do the memo. I will email you once he responds to me. Okay, everyone okay with that? Okay. Let's move on. Um, we're going to discuss goals and agendas for 2024. Let's see, do we want to go back and get a fire marshal update really quick or should we just move on?
Yeah.
Kim, are you, are you listening?
I am, I'm here.
Hi, yeah, you 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 already have done all your work on um, on the, on at at the workshop a couple of days ago. So do you have any other updates for us?
Um, actually, yes. Well, I had a, I did have a meeting with Craig today. And in part of our discussion, just because, you know, we're kind of brainstorming on the the guideline that we're looking, that I'm looking to write for in, you know, kind of in complement with the ordinance to give property owners some guidance on what the ordinance in other terms interpreting it in a more simpler, more direct way outlining different processes. So, um, I'm looking for any assistance I can get from the WPC committee in helping with some language that would be helpful to go in the guideline as well. So, you know, I, because I'm looking to put stuff for different types of vegetation and kind of, uh, that we have in our district. Um, so I'm breaking it down just right now. I'm just looking for overall language that would be good to be incorporated in there. And so I'm just looking to see how I can get some assistance from the committee to help and write and putting this together for the guideline for the homeowners.
So you're you're looking for like a a chapter on land? Do you, do you have any, do you want to?
I can send in, I can send you an email of kind of what the format would be looking like and then see what you all can contribute to what, um, because you guys have some, you know, background and knowledge and other aspects that probably would be useful to include in the guidelines.
Right, I mean, certainly, certainly editing, you know, or or reviewing guidelines. And I think conservation would also have a great deal.
Yes, and I and I did send a a template to Nona today so that she had just something to see if she can, you know, that the the subcommittee for them can also assist in and putting in some language that they think would be helpful for homeowners to understand the the ordinance and just to give them some guidance on um, on the ordinance when it comes to all the different types of, you know, vegetation or, you know, erosion of soils, you know, because certainly the ordinance is not, that's being put forward. It's not take everything out and create a landslide on your house. You know, like, that's not, that's not the purpose at all. So something that that I can, that I can also incorporate into that guideline to help with that.
So how, how, so do you, do you want them to send us a draft and and then we can edit it?
Well, yeah, I think that would be helpful, too.
But the void quorum issues, maybe Nona and, I wonder, do you want to contribute on something like that?
My bandwidth is really limited at the moment.
Well, I mean, but conservation's doing it on your own, right?
Uh, so actually, conservation has a subcommittee that has been working on suggesting edits to the defensible space ordinance. And Craig and I talked today about whether or not that could take the next step of working with him and potentially with Kim as well to say, what does this really look like? So, you know, conservation, our subcommittee put together some guidelines that sort of have drawings that illustrate what defensible space should look like, but 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 they're just drawing. So could we actually say, well, here's some plants that you could use in this zone. Here's some plants that you could use in that zone. And here's what real spacing looks like. But I think where Craig and I are right now, and and maybe Craig could say a little bit more about this, is that it would be helpful to know what people need to know and at what level of granularity almost. Because, you know, what makes sense to me might not really translate well enough to someone else. So I think what would be helpful is, you know, what are the questions? And what what help fine tune didn't.
Do you want us to send you a list based on all the questions we've had in the past? Do you want us to, do you want to tell us what you need? And
So I think the the first goal is is that our subcommittee will meet with Craig potentially um, and and sort of say, well, what's the first step? You know, are are we aiming for something that's of sort of a rough draft that would help explain the ordinance? So that when there's the first reading, it it will, people will understand a little bit more about it with the timeline. So what what would be useful? I think those are kind of the issues that come first, what's the timeline?
Yeah, so I think where the, I mean, when I've been thinking about this, I think the guidelines are meant to be the more the positive side of this. Because the ordinance is kind of the negative side. Here are all the things you can't do. It's illegal to do this, it's illegal to do that, you can't do this and that. Whereas I think the hope of the guidelines is more of, here's the way you accomplish the goals of the ordinance. So I mean, I think we outside of that, we put the timeline and some other stuff. But I think the the guidelines themselves are going to live on. Like, they're they're something that I would expect three years from now. Like, like the department already has guidelines. They give contractors on how to do all the fire suppression things that you need to do as part of the building code. So that, you know, here's what it means to have CO2 monitored, blah, 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 right? And I think this is sort of that same thing for vegetation. Like, here's what zero to five feet looks like. It's not just poured concrete, but, you know, you could have these kind of things laid out here. And, you know, as long as they're, you know, irrigated or, you know, they they don't, they're not dry and flammable or whatever. But I think that's what I'm hoping the guidelines are, is much more of a positive statement of here's, you know, the things that you as a resident can do to achieve the goals of the ordinance. Um, and when, you know, um, when when Kim and I sat down and talked about that, I mean, that's kind of what, I think that's what we were talking about is is more, this is the sort of the the positive side, whereas the ordinance is the legal, very precise, we can enforce this. And 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 that's got to be legalistic. The guidelines don't have to be legalistic. They need to be more sort of, hey, here's how to do, here's how to get your place looking good.
Yeah, and I think that from the conservation perspective, that the the next question from the subcommittee is going to be, well, we, you know, we did a handout on defensible space and here are the principles for defensible space. What what is the next step that we should take in in making those principles something people can apply?
Unless I misunderstood, in response to my question Monday night, Kim said, yes, they are trying to put together a list of acceptable plants. And that's what I think I keep hearing people talking about. Yeah, but that shouldn't take three years.
No, I said it was good.
Oh, oh, I, okay, okay. Right, okay. Applicable in three years. Yeah, okay.
Nona, what, I'm going to throw out a suggestion. Why don't you take the lead on this? Because your committee has has already done so much work and you have those beautiful diagrams and and it's conservation and it makes a ton of sense. I would be happy when you tell me you need something. I would be happy not only to make lists of questions, I'd be willing to call people to get other people's ideas. Whatever you need, I'm willing to 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 do what I can to help you. But it seems like to have one person that is the center point in this would be helpful. And it makes sense for you to start because there's also some conservation concerns that are floating around. And and I think I could bring in a lot of roses and and other issues that, because I I've been in the ranch and I've been in a variety of areas in Portola Valley. But I think that to begin with you would be the best.
Yeah, so that sounds great. Um, but you also said you had some questions that people had asked. I think forwarding those to Nona, just so that the guidelines are, you know, like, they've got as not, as much stuff to work with as possible. And then we can go get more questions from the community. It's just the timeline in this is fairly short. We, um, in talking to Kim today, we kind of have beginning of February to maybe like the ninth of February to get the first draft of this out because that's when the next revision of the ordinance is going to go out. And it'd be nice to have the two so people could kind of say, oh, now I better understand what this ordinance means. Like, these are the things I can do based on these guidelines.
So you're saying less than a month?
Less than a month for this first round. It's not, not, this isn't going to be the final guidelines, but it would be nice to get the first round of this available for people to look at it because I think that's going to help Kim when people go, well, I read through the ordinance and does that mean I can't do this and this and this? And if the guidelines were there. well, I read through the ordinance and does that mean I can't do this and this and this? And if the guidelines were there and says, oh, well, you can do this, you can do that.
Well,
I think that's going to.
The conservation committee has already produced some beautiful diagrams of defensible space. If you could put verbiage to that.
Yeah.
That would be a great first step. And then I can't also believe the inspectors also won't have, I mean, talk about people that know what people ask and, and, and their concerns are, but if, if, when you guys get done with that draft, then maybe you want to get input from us and.
Yeah, I'm hoping that some of the material is stuff we've already put together and it would be like linking the, the zero to five requirements with the plant list that we already have online, which are the ground covers that are more I, but, but that's kind of my question is how much, how much is this sort of synthesizing and, and sort of laying out in a, in a particular framework, stuff that we've already put together in a different framework.
And also the district is going to obviously draw on how fires, zone zero information is already out there. Marin's done a whole bunch on zone zero. So let's see where we are. Once that information gets drawn out and then maybe have this committee review it and, and, and add to it and, and get input from.
Well, well, so Craig, are you saying the guidelines are being worked on right now? To get a version out by early February?
Yeah.
February, what did you say?
The ninth.
The ninth?
Yeah. And it'll be a first draft. And I mean, the, I mean, if you look at Kim's current timeline, the goal is to get this stuff finalized so she can start doing enforcement in May. All right. Actually, I guess it's in, in April. I should, I should be clear. And there's three month windows. There's a first reading, three months, second reading, three months before they can do enforcement. So you start working your way back. And that means that her draft, which is going to try to incorporate all the comments she's heard so far for the ordinance now. She's going to try to put another draft out sometime between the first and the ninth of February. And people will then have until about the 20th to comment. And then after that, it's starting down that sort of official first reading, second reading. It's, it's on a track to go out the door. So just to be clear, you know, this is, it, it's fairly tight. And so the goal, and, and that's why I called Nona this morning was, once I realized how tight this timeline, it was just like, you know, can we get some basic guidelines? And I agree. I mean, you know, a lot of the defensible space stuff you've already done, I think is the right stuff. It'd just be nice to be able to hand people two things. Here's some guidelines. Here's the ordinance. You kind of read them together to use the guidelines to help you understand the positive side of the ordinance.
I mean, zone zero is not new. There, there, there is a lot of guidelines already established with some zero. The CAL FIRE and, and so I would think that we would just be.
There aren't. Yeah. That's what I was going to say. Come on up to the mic. Use the mic.
So I'm your new to Portola Valley homeowner.
Yeah.
And I go in and I read trying to figure out what I can do in zone zero. And I talk to people and they say, oh, well, you can have shrubs in zone zero as long as they're pruned up. And then I talk to them and they say, you can't have anything but stone. And the stone can't even have landscape cloth underneath it. And then I talk to other people and they say, well, hey, you could have some stone, but you can have plants in that. And you can have ground covers. So I go into Calscape and I look up ground covers and it has ground covers that are up to six foot tall. There isn't anything that I've read in what Portola Valley has, in what California has, that gives me a simple version of in zone zero, if it is flat, you can have plants. They can't be higher than 18 inches. They can't be woody. They have to be X apart. I think people need some real specificity. I need some real specificity in terms of what to tell the community I live in. And some examples of nice plants that look gorgeous. I mean, when I walk, I walk about three miles a day round in Portola Valley. And I walk past these hedges that come right up to the edge of the road. And I listen to Kim and I'm thinking, whoa, this whole thing's got to go. It's got to be 10 foot back. What, what, where am I allowed to have it? Not, it can't be here, but what, what do you suggest that I do instead? So that to me, the five foot and the road part are the two parts that have these good theoretical statements that could be interpreted multiple ways. And if you're going to have a whole bunch of different inspectors doing this, I think they need the guidelines too, because otherwise you're going to inspector shop until you get the, oh, so and so says that I can keep this. Okay. He's the guy I want to inspect. You need consistency. Not only for the homeowners to understand what they're supposed to do, but so that these not one or two, but multiple inspectors that are going to have are going to interpret these things the same way.
So, so, so we, we need to, to stay on our agenda. This sounds like it's, it's a pretty big discussion and it, and it's going to come home to what does the fire district say they want in zone zero? So M J, you were on the zone zero work group for CAL FIRE, right?
Yeah. As far as I know, I still am.
I didn't think there was much in zone zero. I mean, I, I thought the list was pretty small. So I guess it depends on what.
Actually, the zone zero work group wanted to allow low things and spacing and everything Cyrena is talking about, but then the insurance industry wants, you know, nothing. So, so I think what happened is things came to this lather head and with all the insurance issues going on, right? It, it's like, I don't know what's going on up at the state level, but it's like our work group stopped meeting.
So. So, so the first thing we, we need from you, Nona, is a definition in, in general. What is going to be allowed? And then we can start talking specifically about what those plants might be and, and what does that mean? A planter box and, and, and what does that mean? You know, to ask questions and to say, these are our questions based on that. But I think there needs to be a point person that tries to get to work with the fire district to get a definition of that zone zero.
Yeah. As, as I see it, and you know, Craig, I want to be helpful to hear from you on this too. I think this is going to be an iterative process where conservation will say, here's how we interpret this. And, you know, in the, in the way that seems most compatible to Portola Valley. And then the fire marshal may say, well, not quite, or, you know, yes, but not this, or whatever. I, I don't, I don't think conservation knows the answer yet. But we certainly want to help find the answer.
Yeah. When I was talking to Kim this morning, I mean, you know, the way I pitched it to her was that you would, you could advise her. And like, at, at the end of the day, it's going to be the fire marshal's decision what goes into this guidelines. And that's perfectly, you know, legitimate. That seems like the right thing. But she's got a lot on her plate and this is something where you guys have a lot of this expertise and you also have the sort of ecological sensitivity, if you will. And I think Kim would appreciate that. I mean, that was the sense I got. So I think, you know, I see this as basically definitely a win for everybody, because I think you guys bring a lot of that sort of natural resources and stuff. And then Kim can look at it and say, yeah, that's close, but we need to tune this a little bit. But, but I think that you'll bring the vast majority of it in. Kim will say, yeah, that stuff all looks good. Um, and then she'll tune the pieces. I mean, that's, that's how I'm guessing it will, will go. But yeah, it's definitely an advising role to the fire marshal for sure. Yeah.
And you know, to be honest, it tells him there's a lot of what conservation is seeing now in terms of landscaping plans where we're seeing a lot of people who want to put succulents in. And they're not native, you know, the pollinator resources and things like that. But conservation is rethinking sort of how, how we interpret landscape plans too, because people are coming up with new ways of meeting the fire resistant.
Well, and, and also it's going to depend on whether that house is wood. You know, and, you know, the reality is if that house is wood or it's a certain kind of construction, there may be cases where the inspector does not want plants in that area at all. And, and that's what I am concerned about writing, uh, writing these general guidelines. And, and they, they make people feel good, but the reality is you're not going to know what's allowed in your zone zero until the inspector comes out to your house, because every house is going to be different. And it's going to depend. You have, well, I could go on for 30 minutes talking about it, but it's, it's a slippery slope when when we take something, I'm going to be this thunk at the picnic here. Zone, zone zero is, is supposed to keep us safe from fire. And you don't want to sugarcoat that. Is that we have a lot of leaves that fall and they're dead leaves and you need to keep that area clear. And if you have a bunch of, of low plants, those dead leaves are going to catch in those plants. There's, there's going to be an ember storm and that plant's going to catch on fire and it's going to be right next to your house.
Well, or maybe if you have succulents there, they will actually trap embers and prevent them. So that's the question. And I don't know the answer, obviously, but I, I think we all have to be open to thinking about maybe if there are ideas that need to be considered.
And maybe we can tie it if you have to, whether you have ember resistant vents. And if you have ember resistant vents, you can have different kinds of plants. But if you're, if your vents are not ember resistant, you know, I don't know. Anyways, um, so you are going to, I am a great editor and I'm, I'm a, I, I don't mind writing stuff. I may not be good at it, but I don't mind doing it. So I am here for you.
Well, so what, what exactly is the plan here? Then Kim is going to work with Nona on these guidelines? And they're going, you guys are going to get them out by February ninth or something?
Yep. I think that's the, the first, I mean, we're, it, it's still forming. We'll see. I mean, that, that would be the ideal plan. Whether, cause I mean, Nona's subcommittee hasn't even met yet. I mean, I just brought this up to her today because Kim and I just talked about it this morning. But if, if we can get all the pieces lined up, then that would be the idea. And the thing I would add is if you guys know of questions that residents have been asking, particularly about zero to five feet, just send them to Nona, even if they're redundant. Let's just make sure we have all of them. Cause we'll just try to make sure that every, when somebody reads through this stuff, they kind of get their questions answered when sometimes when you read through the ordinance, they don't get answered. So.
But it, it depends what the definition of this is, you know.
To just bring, give her the questions.
Well, I mean, so the ordinance says non combustible. Is that really true? Because if it really means you can't have anything that's not non combustible.
No, the ordinance doesn't say that.
Well, it says combustible materials. And one thing I asked Kim this morning
Yeah.
is that it doesn't, she doesn't define combustible.
Yeah. Well.
So, so no, no. But so, so I think that's stuff, but
Yeah.
my suggestion is I think this discussion is going on too long and that I, I think we've got a plan to go forward. I, I totally hear your concern. And I think let's get the first rev of this going. Kim can look at it. This committee can look at it and then figure out the next rev. So, but again, I think the goal was to get this sort of a positive view of this ordinance so that we get compliance. That's really the, the high level goal. So thank you.
And, and you can pick one person on the committee as a buddy. No one's going to judge you. No one's going to have hurt feelings. But that you can ask to edit or discuss it with. And then, then you can send me the drafts and I can put them in our agenda packet and you can get the whole committee's review of the draft.
Well, she's doing this draft as a conservation committee though.
But, but she could still talk to one person on this committee. It could be me because she wants, somebody has time and likes to write. It could be you because you know, probably more about defensible space. So you can pick one person to communicate to on this committee about the details, brainstorm, whatever you want, send things to. And then you can also send us a draft. I can put it in the agenda packet and we can give you comments. Okay. Any questions from attendees on this subject? Okay. All right. Let's move on to.
Oh, actually, this is still a fire marshal update?
Yes.
Is Kim still there?
I am, sorry. And that's, that's, that's pretty much it. I appreciate everyone's collaboration in trying to make this as youthful and as successful as we can make it. Um, to be truly a good guidance for residents and/or property owners with that. And other than that, I don't have any other updates at this time.
Okay. I just, so, so basically we're, we're, since we have this wonderful conservation liaison, we're going to let our liaison take the lead on this for us.
Yeah.
And tell us that the wildfire committee, what she wants from us, because conservation has already done so much work on this issue. That's the, the summary of what we're going to do.
Yeah. Okay. Great. I, I just have a comment about something else.
Go ahead.
Regarding Kim. So, you know, uh, you, you didn't actually mention about Kim's wonderful workshop on Monday.
I, well, I did briefly mention it, but okay.
Okay. Well, anyways. And, and thank you again, Kim, for doing that. You know, I don't know if you guys noticed, but, uh, well, it's not my notes here, but we had, I forget something like 35 people online and then we had at least 12 people in the room, 12 people besides us. So I mean, the turnout was great. So Kim, my question to you though, is, you know, when you were asking that people really needed to get their assessments done, you really want people to call up the fire district and, and arrange those? I was wondering as far as fire wise, are, are you guys going to require that? Or maybe if you don't already, maybe you could require that anyone, any community doing a fire wise thing, that part of that is that every house in that community should get the assessment done? Have you guys already done that?
No, but it's a good, it's a good thought that I'd love to bring back and do further discussion with the district. But no, currently it is not a requirement for, for the fire wise communities. I believe that within their, I don't know if it's in the renewal, since I don't really handle the fire wise program. I, I believe there might be something in their renewal packets that does require a fire district reinspection anyway. But otherwise, no, there are no current requirements.
Okay. So, so as of two months ago, um, no, there wasn't, there's no requirement for fire, fire district inspection. Renewal is basically you submit receipts for so much per home. I think it's like an average of like $25 or something per home. You have to show that you did recycling or something of, of, of vegetation materials. And then you have to prove that you did an event. And it's so it's, it's, it's fire wise. It's a great tool for communications. But it, it doesn't, it's, it's the beginning, but it doesn't accomplish a whole lot. It depends on how robust the community is. Yeah.
So can I speak to fire wise for a minute? I mean, both because I'm putting together with a group of people, a fire wise community, um, and also to separate it. Fire wise is not the fire district. It is a national, national program. And it's not about individual parcels. It's very clearly set up. It's an aggregate system and it's built that way on purpose. So I don't, the fire department is responsible when you create a new fire wise community. They come up and do an inspection of the area that you're defining as your fire wise community. But that's coming by and it's like, oh, in this community, 20% have wood shake roofs, you know, 70% have asphalt roofs and 10% have steel roof. It's at that level, but it's not, house A has X, house B has Y, which is the inspections that Kim's talking about. And those are in the district and those are enforceable. So I, I don't think you want to. And those are in the district and those are enforceable. So I I don't think you want to conflate what fire wise is trying to do with what Kim's trying to do.
Okay, I was I was just going to suggest it as a way to get more people to do the assessment.
So I think fire wise could be used as a vehicle to say, we encourage people to do it and here are all the benefits. But then they're going to do it on an individual basis. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I think we're going to move on to our next. Thank you so much, Kim. I think we're going to move on to
Thank you, everybody.
Uh, to discuss goals and agendas for two thousand and twenty four. And am I off soon? Did I get locked out? Because I want to share my screen. Did I, did I get locked out?
Are you on there on your own computer? Because you're telling me schoolhouse and historic schoolhouse.
Because as we discuss this, we want to Thank you for coming.
Yes.
Yeah, I got locked out, huh? Okay. Okay, have you drive carefully? Right. All right, so I did this little tiny thing. Okay, so as we as we talk about our priorities and our agendas, I just want to so what we know is coming. Got some fun things. Cal Fire is going to have its fire maps sometime this year. Hopefully in the first part of the year, and that's going to be an interesting discussion. And then Flame Mappers, when Cal Fire releases its fire maps, Flame Mapper is going to release their maps, and they have offered to also come and discuss their maps. And that'll be an interesting conversation as well. We also have this new committee structure coming. It's going to go before the town council. It's sometime in January or February. I thought it was January and if they approve it, you will have both brown act committees, like we are right now, and non brown act committees. And once that handbook gets published, you know, we'll take a look at it again, and we'll have a dialogue with the with the town manager, and we can discuss once again whether we want our status to change and what that would mean. We had started last year communication strategies and how we can actually reach out and communicate about wildfire preparedness more effectively. And we kind of got caught with the ordinances and we had to kind of abandon that. But I know that's something that both MJ and I talk about a lot. It sounds like this town guidelines for decking is going to be a topic at least for next month. And then possible agenda items might be, of course, now this education and the new ordinances, zone zero, defensive space hardening. It sounds like that might include helping conservation with some kind of guidelines. Also, once the safety element does get approved, we're going to probably want to at least discuss it and discuss if there's anything with wildfire and preparedness and how that might affect our committee. Before the town manager Jeremy Dennis left and the attorney Kara Silver left, the town was in discussions to become a fire risk reduction community. And that can help with grants. It doesn't help with insurance, but it can help with with getting grants. And when they left, that kind of was suspended. And that is something that I and and when I, in my understanding is there is no active talks, and that's something that I would would like to advocate for. There is also, in the same discussion, the next bullet line down, discussions about a California wildfire protection plan. That's another option. And that is another kind of it's a it's a document that the community creates. The fire district would create it with Woodside and Portola Valley, and it's like the safety element, but at a much finer level, Marin has it. It's amazing. And so you would define in that document exactly what kind of programs we want to create, what kind of grant we were going after, you know, detailed things we would do, and that can also help you get grant money. And so we might want to discuss before we even advocate for one or the other, which one we would want to advocate for. And then there is this new evacuation document by the EPC, which if you have not read it, you should. It's it's a very good document. I know that the geological committee is going to write a chapter on what would happen after an earthquake and that causing a wildfire. And the chair, so if there's an earthquake, it's very likely there's a wealth, it's very possible there could be a wildfire because gas lines and stuff. And the chair said, well, gee, would our committee review that chapter if they wrote it? And I said, of course we would. So that might come across our path. Then there's this community, this this issue about fire wise communities. And it's it's a deep well. I I looked into it quite a bit last year when I wrote that recommendation for a a program. And, you know, there there are whole towns that become like Hillsborough, a fire wise community, and it's an interesting topic. And and I and I would be and I think it would be good for this committee to know what a fire wise community is and the pros and the cons and 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 what it really means. And then there's thinking out of the box, you know, best practices for communication. I I'm kind of stuck on these goats. And I think it was Mid Penn where we we discussed their, we weren't here, I think, maybe it was Stanford, they use goats. And they mentioned that they use goats at different times of the season, depending on what they wanted them to eat. And I I I'm I'm very interested in the goats as a wildfire prevention. So those are possible agenda topics. Wanda and I had a little discussion about what the finance and insurance subcommittee would do this year. So first of all, I want to say, the town secretary is going to publish a vacancy list for committees, although we don't technically have a vacancy. I would like to get a couple more members next year and and up our membership to seven and and increase our membership. But we talked about possibly working with the town manager and our subcommittee to explore the possibility of grant funding. And that would include the possibility of Portola Valley funding a grant writer with the fire district. And that's been a topic floating around, and that was one of our recommendations last year to the town council. And then we also talked about maybe advocating for us to become either a fire risk production community or or participating in a in a CWPP. For the insurance, bye, Craig. For the insurance section, we insurance in California is very complicated and it's very messy right now. But we we thought that if we could write a concise document with links to reliable sources. Kind of a, this is where you begin if you lose your insurance. This is, and I know MJ's smiling, but 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 there's a lot of people that don't know anything. And it's very muddled right now. And that would be a document that would have a dynamic QR code on the town website. So it's it's first of all, we could share that QR code in posters and say, if you have questions, whatever, this is a document. It's something the town manager could send out if he gets questions. But it's also something that rather than creating a website that has to be updated and takes a lot of staff time. This is something that every time we just get new information, we update the document and send it to the town secretary. So that's what we feel we can do next year, as well as, you know, support the committee and and other things. MJ, have you thought about what you and Dee may want to do on your mitigation subcommittee?
Well, Dee Dee and I, you know, Dee's really the subcommittee chair now, so I'm sad that she couldn't talk to this. But we came up with three goals for the year. One was recruit, help recruit more members to the committee. Two was to promote fire wise more. And we were going to we were thinking maybe if we had some kind of a thermometer image and it would show, you know, how many more homes are joining fire wise, you know, within Portola Valley, maybe that would help. And then the third thing was maybe along Nona's lines of about how do you demo what people do? We we were thinking we should work on that.
I love those goals. Those are our three goals. Any more comments or ideas on agenda items or priorities for next year? Daniel has a comment or question.
Hey, yeah, thanks. You know, in in Ladera, we were also looking about similar things of potentially being a fire wise community or trying to figure out grant writing and things like that. So you know, I know we're not obviously technically part of Portola Valley, but I wonder if there's any benefit to trying to work together on some of these things and see if there's, I don't know, any more strength in including a larger area, more houses and that sort of thing.
Maybe a member when you're going to expand the size of the committee. I I don't think we're we're allowed to take members from Ladera. We're we're allowed to take it from unincorporated. Well, anyways, I I would love to.
Ladera is unincorporated.
I wonder if 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 we could add them as a member.
Ask.
Okay, okay. So I I will, I will, I'm going to send myself an email.
Because our thinking is like, you know, we're, we have no government below county. So we don't really have funding sources. We don't really have committees like like Portola Valley has, but we're, you know, our address is Portola Valley, even though we're not Portola Valley because we're unincorporated. So just trying to figure out like how we can kind of leverage the resources that are available in the nearby communities and also see what resources that we have that we can contribute.
I I I I think that's a great idea. Can you shoot me an email so I have your email information? It's 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 on our website under Portola Valley Wildfire Committee, or you can just, I don't want to get my email over the
Yeah, don't give your email on this. I'll I'll I can also, can I email the the committee?
Just email the committee and it comes to me. If you go to our webpage.
Email, just the website changed, I think.
On our webpage of Portola Valley.
I I have Daniel's email.
Okay, good. Yeah, she'll forward it to me. I think that's a great idea. Thank you. Okay, so then everybody kind of, Wanda, you look, you look like you're thinking about your grandson.
Before we forget, the next meeting is Wednesday, February twenty one.
We're not done yet.
Oh, we're not done. Sorry.
Okay, all right. So then let's move. So I'm going to just skip to, so what what is on the agenda for next month then? What do we want to discuss? Nona, we have an update on the guidelines. I might have something on insurance. You're going to have the decking. Is that enough? I think that's plenty. Okay. So then we need to vote for officers for two thousand and twenty four. I asked Dee, she doesn't want to be chair. Would anyone else like to be chair? I will, I will train them, hold their hand, sit next to them. Would anyone else like to be secretary?
I nominate Jennifer Hammer as chair.
Would any? I second that. Okay, so so let's do the first thing. So I have I have a motion. Would anyone like the second promotion? Okay, and then Jennifer Hammer's chair. Okay. We got a vote. We we raise your hands for Jennifer. Okay, unanimous. Okay, wait. And Nona seconded it. And I'm happy to do it. I'm I'm really happy. If you're not seconding me, I'm happy to do it.
Dee and I are both quitting if you're not the chair.
Okay, and then do we have a motion for who should be secretary? Okay, and then let's show hands. Okay, unanimous. MJ unanimously. Okay, all right. Excellent, excellent. Okay, no, any conservation committee updates?
No, I think.
Mitigation Subcommittee? No, no updates. Finance and insurance, no. Yeah, okay. And then our next meeting is February twenty fourth, yes?
Look at your calendar.
Yeah. Oh, did I get that wrong? What is wrong with me? It's my calendar. Yeah, it's twenty one. Okay. So we'll we'll change that. Okay. Can I have a motion to close out this meeting? Second. Vote. Okay, closing out the meeting. Thank you for anyone who attended.